Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council Meeting. It's Monday, January 23rd. As we say, on or about seven o'clock for our starting time. Tonight is a meeting that involves committee meetings. Four committees will be meeting. Transportation, actually five, I guess. Committee of the whole, which is a little different than usual. City and Safety Services, Planning and Development Committee, Finance and Personnel Committee. And we're going to begin the evening with a presentation by Wendy Wysocki from Hawking Athens Perry County Community Action regarding fair housing. Wendy? There should be a microphone.
Yeah, who can sit here and sit there? I think most of the time podium will work better. Okay.
Wherever you want me.
Try the podium. You're going to cover the podium?
Can I do things?
Yeah.
My name is Wendy Wysocki and I'm with Hawking Athens Perry Community Action and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you tonight. We're going to talk about fair housing. And fair housing is a law that was established in 1968. And what that means is that you may freely reside in a place without regard to whether you're male or female, your military status, your national origin, your physical mental disability, your family status, race or color, ancestry. I do want to say Athens County has not had, or Athens City, has not had any discrimination filed with me in the last two and a half years. And I think that's really good. I do get a lot of landlord tenant calls because we are there for landlord tenant and there is a difference between fair housing and landlord tenant. I did bring some brochures for everybody that are on the table. One is how to report discrimination in your county. The other one is your fair housing community guide. And then the landlord tenant handbooks. The only thing I can say is when someone calls, and I'm trying to make this brief because I didn't bring a big presentation. I put you in a database and if those, I tell you who you need to call. I cannot give you legal advice, but I try to steer you in the right direction. I make a file on your problems or, you know, whatever you feel is going on. Then if you do feel it's discrimination, I have you fill out a form and send it back to me. If you need help filling out that form, I will come to your house if you can't get to my office. And then I will send it to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission for you and walk, and go with you through everything. The main thing is landlord tenant. And when you call, if you have a landlord tenant issue, I do the same thing. I have you fill a paper out telling me what the issues are. I normally refer you to Southeast Ohio Legal Services, the Health Department, anywhere that may help with your situation. Trying to think, I'm nervous. Landlord tenant issues are basically, they have to do with your lease. Whatever your lease says is what you need to go by. And that's what the landlord needs to go by. And a lot of people do not read the lease before they sign it, so that causes big issues. Other than that, I can't think of anything. Does anyone have any questions on the landlord tenant? I'm there for landlords as well as tenants.
I would ask that you kind of define a little bit the protected category statuses. I know that they, the familial status is probably the most recent one. And when I say recent, last 15, 20 years, but that kind of thing. And I also just am curious as to if they're ever going to change a handicap to disability or?
We consider, I know what you're saying. And no, they have not. It's still handicapped, so I'm sorry. That does offend some people. We're not trying to in any way. Family status, what was your question on there?
Just the definition. I just feel like it's still something that I hear it sometimes. People talk about when we are in a planning commission meeting and they're talking about who's going to reside in these future rental units. They'll say, oh, it's going to be a young couple, no children. It's like alarm bells go off in my head.
That is not, they cannot do that.
Right. And I don't know if you wanted to expound on?
Family status would be having children in your family in an apartment complex saying you can't have your children on the second floor. Well, they can't tell you that. Your family status is single with children, you're a family, whether you're a couple or you have kids, that's a family. And you cannot discriminate. So, does that kind of explain it for you? Military status is the most recent one added. And the reason they added military status was a law, the military was being called out to go into Iraq or Iran, wherever they were going. And the landlords were trying to make them stay with that lease or they would not rent to them because they knew they would be leaving. Well, there is a law for military families that at least can be broken if they are being deployed. Now, a military family could not move into a house and decide they need a bigger one with another bedroom and want to move next door. They have to stay. If they're not being deployed, they have to stick to that lease, however long that lease is. So that was the newest one. Whether you're male or female, I'll touch on that. Some places don't want to rent to females. I mean, I have had people call me, but there wasn't any standing to it. They would say they weren't, no one was renting to them because they were female. Or no one was renting to them because they were male. You know, it doesn't matter whether you're male or female. You can live wherever you want. You can get a loan wherever you want. This protects you against everything. Predatory lending, anything like that. So, national origin, a lot of people didn't want to rent to Asians, okay? Because it was a big thing. You can't do that. I mean, it doesn't matter where you're from, what color you are, you can be purple. It doesn't matter. They cannot tell you they're not going to rent to you. And if there is anyone with issues on that, just call me and we will take care of it. I will, yes.
No, go ahead, finish.
Oh, I will call the landlord. We will, you know, talk to attorneys, we'll file paperwork, we'll go to the Ohio Civil Rights Commission. We will do whatever we need to do so that everyone is treated fairly.
Just a question about protected class. You said, actually, you've not had any discrimination cases filed in over two and a half years?
No.
That's wonderful.
It is.
Ohio University and now the city have said that same-sex couples are a protected class, just as any couple would be. Is that included in your?
That is not, it is, I'm sorry. It is for Athens City because that has been added in. And I, these are not updated, I am sorry. Thank you for bringing that to my attention because I did forget to mention that. So, yes, they are a protected class as well.
Okay.
Wouldn't that not apply to transgender and all the language that we just, you know, did last year?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything on, go ahead.
So, when you say there's no cases of discrimination, is that because nobody feels that they're discriminated or they just don't know how to report it? Or they just don't feel that, you know, they just say, I'll go somewhere else?
I think you've got all three. I think a lot of people do not know that they are being discriminated against. They don't realize what laws are out there. A lot of people don't know who to call. It's, I think it's all of them rolled into one.
Okay. And I know you said call you or email you, I imagine. And we've got your business card here. Just for the record, can you tell us your telephone number? This will go over a string video forever, so therefore, and therefore, your email for your HAPCAP and your telephone number.
Sure. The phone number for Hawking Athens Perry is 740-767-4500. I'm the only Wendy there because my last name's Wysocki and some people have problem pronouncing that. My email is Wendy, W E N D Y, at HAPCAP.org. Any other questions?
And you work with, I know there's a student service, legal services. Do you work with that a lot?
No, I do not. But I refer people to Southeast Ohio Legal Services and I'm sure they know where to refer people. I am not familiar with the student legal services. That has never, I've never had any information on that.
I think it'd be a good connection because most of, a lot of the problems, and I know we have students in the audience, you know, the landlord tenant handbook and that I do know that Patrick McGee and is it the Center for Student Legal Advocacy?
Yeah.
Get a lot of landlord tenant questions.
Okay. Advocacy, can you email me that information, please? And that way I can get in touch with them and we can?
Just so you're, they have kind of, to help you.
Yeah. Well, you guys are giving me all kinds of information. Does anyone have any other questions on landlord tenant issues? Anything like that? Anything else on the fair housing and discrimination?
One more question. You talked about in the city. What about the county in general? Is that a different issue or?
We have not had any for Athens County as well. I haven't had any in all three counties in the last two and a half years. But like I said, we think, wow, that's great. But I really don't know if people know who to contact. So that's why I'm trying, I do a lot more trainings now. I try to get out to the public. I go to the college, to the Baker Center. Is that what it's called, Baker Center? I go there and try to talk to everybody, so.
So, if there are any groups that want to actually get the word from you?
Yes.
Okay. And preferably a PowerPoint just in case.
Yes, yes. And we had talked and we decided we didn't want to do an hour and a half training, so.
Oh, they'd love it.
I mean, I can come back definitely and do that for you guys, no problem.
We have an hour and a half.
Thank you for coming. I think it's really important with the percentage of rentals that we have in the community that we have this kind of service available and you can make it known. I'm wondering if there's an appropriate link on our city website where we can be linking them. I think there's something that links the community associations and moving to Athens and that might be helpful information for people. One more way of advertising what's there for the citizens.
Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And so council knows, we are scheduling a separate training session, the full training session with the code officers because, and the code enforcement officers because they deal with a lot.
They get the PowerPoint.
He's making me feel bad for not bringing him out. But I can do trainings for anybody. Please just let me know. It can be daytime, evening, it doesn't matter. We can surely do that to try and get the word out to everybody.
Wendy was passing around a sign-up sheet. We hope that everybody signed up.
I can get a copy of that, so I'm not going to worry about.
And there are some brochures here on the end of the table. So, if you, we'll just leave those there and when you leave this evening, please take the appropriate ones. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
We're going to, if there are some people who need to sit down, go ahead, take this moment. We're just, we're going to begin with the transportation committee. The transportation committee is going to talk about an item from the agenda of the City and Safety Services Committee, the Columbus Circle Access Road. Discussion is moving up to transportation. So, it's a beginning. Number nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item tonight for transportation is a brief discussion on Ohio Brew Week coming up this summer. I saw Mr. Gates arrive. If you could, you can stand or you can sit here at the table, whatever you're comfortable with. And the purpose of the discussion tonight is to find out a little bit about this year's week of fun and celebration of Craft Brew in Ohio and also discuss possible street closing associated with the festival. So, feel free to make any comments.
We moved the dates this week. We had a conflict with the university's move to semesters and our normal third week of July is first week of orientation and obviously, you don't want to invite a bunch of, you don't want to have an event and then have nobody, no place for people to stay. So, that's pretty rude to be a host, a host city and not have any hotel rooms. So, we moved it to June 22nd, starting on a Friday, and it's going to commonize on Saturday, June 30th. We have an event at the, at the, but UN started off on Friday, they have the Rock and Roast event. And then there's a Christian meal, it's going to event on Saturday at the Dairy Barn. So, these are, you know, just kicking off things off. And then on Sunday, we've got some more things going on and also some restaurants doing some events. And what I'm really here for tonight is, and, I mean, we started the Brew Weeks around the country and the brewers, the National Brewers Association in Colorado, it's actually in Boulder, they run the Great American Beer Festival. One of their, one of the gentlemen that's on their executive council is named, is Andy Sparrow, which is kind of interesting because the gentleman that came up with our concept was named John Sparrow. And, you know, this guy, this guy's looking and he's like, well, we're extra related. And so, but Andy's told me that, you know, we were the first ones to come up with this concept and now there's 54, 55 across the country. In seven years, it went that fast and that quick. And so, but they all culminate with a festival type of thing. And we were looking at utilizing the Union Street between Court and Congress, thinking that, you know, if we could close that off for our Saturday event, which would be really a four hour, because that's the average for these, these kinds of closing events are four hours. And, you know, we really wouldn't cause any kind of traffic pattern because you just go down to President Street, come on back up Court Street. So, we were thinking that was a perfect spot to do it. We could, you know, block it off. Let's tell them, Paula, that really all we need is a dumpster to throw the trash in because we're accustomed to, you know, setting up for Boogie on the Bricks and putting our own trash cans out, you know, that we borrowed from our neighbors and stuff and, you know, filling the, dump the trash out during the day to kind of keep that, our area, you know, real clean because that's sort of like our demographic. That's the older group that's in that, you know, 35 to 60 range. But, you know, I took a poll amongst the brewers and they, they thought that the best time would be from like two to six. And of course, we would need some time to set up, some time to break down. I don't see this getting really big. I don't want to have a band and.
Oh, that was one of the questions before asking if there's going to be entertainment.
Well, I mean.
Wandering minstrels, I don't know.
I could see doing something more of an acoustic, you know, with less, but I really, I don't, I don't really have the energy or, you know, the ability to pull off a big, huge music festival. And it's not my expertise and.
In the past, it's been Boogie on the Bricks on the same day would have their event as well?
Exactly. Yeah. We just, you know, piggybacked with them and, you know, I was on the initial Boogie on the Bricks board and we, you know, it's always seemed to work out. And, you know, they, I wanted them to keep their same weekend because now these events are filling up. I mean, I either, I read a blog from the Columbus, Indiana newspaper, okay? Columbus, Indiana, south of, of Wilmington. And it's, you know, it's just one of those all-American cities. And, you know, they were saying Ohio is becoming like the Munich of the Midwest, that we're having all these festivals surrounding wrapped beer, you know, specialty beers. And, you know, they had mentioned Ohio Brew Week and, you know, and it's been, you know, talking about its longevity and everything. So, I guess that that's what we're asking for. And again, I mean, to be honest with you, I would love to have Chief Pile come in and rock and roll us, you know, with his music. But I don't know what that would entail as far as electronics and street. I don't want to make this complicated. And, because we're kind of quiet and we get in and out of the way and, you know, really it's, it's a community's event. It's not, you know, our, our board, our staff. It's the community's event. And, you know, we want to get along with everybody. But again, if he, you know, if he wanted to set up his own stuff, I wouldn't stop him.
This isn't coming from the chief. It's just somebody, some citizen asked.
Well, we can, I assume we'll certainly proceed with a street closing for that event. You can work out whatever entertainment you want. We'll make sure that we get the space for you. So, this means, the only complaint I've ever heard about Brew Week is that there wasn't enough beer. In that the microbreweries would run out when they had their Court Street event. But I assume without it being the same day as Boogie on the Bricks, that wouldn't be a concern probably this year.
No. I mean, it was always designed to run out, okay? So.
Keep the demand?
Yeah. I mean, everybody has got to make a little bit, I mean, it's an economic development, you know, it's a machine. And so, everybody needs to have traffic coming through on that Saturday especially, when we have the highest level of participation. So, you know, it doesn't bother us, it doesn't really bother the brewers. They're ready, they're done by two hours if, you know, they want to go. And, you know, that's the thing, this year with using a four-hour time slot, we'll use, we would like to use more civic organizations to do the pouring, you know, the brewers being around there in case there's some equipment adjustments and things like that. Then have them sitting at round tables where people can come up and have conversations with them, one-on-one or, you know, something in that mold. And I don't see that, you know, us running out by four hours, you know, it'll be fine, you know. They know exactly, we'll know exactly how much we need to put out there. And, yeah, in the past, it's, it's gone in a, you know, an hour and a half or two hours. It's never gone by us two hours. But again, it's never really attended to, so.
Just a point of clarification, because I know in the past years, it's always been Ohio Brew Week immediately followed by Boogie on the Bricks, kind of anchoring the closing. And that this year, they're going to be separate on, you know, separate times. Is that going to hold or is that going to change? Go back to the way things have been in the past where next summer, a year from this coming summer, that it will come, they'll merge back together again?
This coming summer, orientation will be on the week that we're going at this week. So, we're going to be back to where we were before. Okay? So, the first week of orientation will be that third week of June. So, we'll go back to where we were. And, so, that's fine. I mean, that's was one of the things that I was, I was trying to hit on there at the moment. I forgot about that, is that we are bouncing around this year. And I specifically talked to the Boogie on the Bricks group and said, don't move with us. Stay where you're at because these event schedules in the summer are so compacted now around this state. Got to have that niche carved out for you. And that third week of, third Saturday in July is now established as Boogie on the Bricks. And I had to do some negotiating with Ohio Craft Brewers Association, which, you know, fortunately I know all of them because we hold the annual meeting here every year during Ohio Brew Week. So, they were, you know, carving up stuff and thinking, hey, I kind of like that third week in July. I said, no, no, the third week of July is Boogie on the Bricks in Athens. We've got to keep it that way. And so, we did some negotiation, looked at the calendar, we got us all, carved us all up a piece of time and now everybody's happy, so.
It's a one-year anomaly then, basically.
It's a one-year oddity and it's, you know, it is what it is. And, you know, we'll, we'll learn things, we'll experience different, you know, different rhythms and things like that. And, you know, we've always been able to ride the wave in the past, so I don't see it being any different than, you know, that we've done in the past. So, I mean, I, it's going to be less time to get ready for it. That's going to be the hard part, but.
Any other questions or comments?
Boogie did say they're going to come, they're just not quite ready yet from their board for their closing, that is the third week in July. And then the mayor was reminding me, that'll be the first week we're experiencing the Oxbow Bridge being closed, but it should still all flow and function because it's not like people will be coming up Richland Avenue, but we can get around once we get here, so.
Well, thank you very much for visiting us to tell us a little about it. And very much looking forward to it. I think many of the community are and across the state and bigger regions. So, it's a great example of a wonderful event that started here and other people have tried to emulate, but they can't quite get it right.
They can't. And that's what's funny because of our uniqueness and our, and our size. Even the smaller communities like Calumbee Zoo, Michigan, really can't pull it off like we can, you know. I mean, they're, they're more spread out. And of course, all Cleveland, New York, San Francisco, Philly, Chicago, Milwaukee, Raleigh, on and on and on. They're really spread out. I mean, Cleveland's spread out from Madison, Ohio, which is in Lake County, all the way over to North Ridgeville, which is almost, you know, half an hour from Lorraine. So, that's an hour and 45 minute drive, so, yeah.
Something unique for our community here. Well, thank you very much and we will.
I'm sorry, Mr. Guys.
Give the street closing.
Sorry, sorry for interrupting. I just was going to question real quickly. You alluded to the fact that this event brings in people from all over the country, correct? And I think that's again, a blessing to this event and to our community. Real quickly, if you could acknowledge a couple of the states or people that, if you can share with us some of the distances that people have traveled to get here from?
The first year, the first event, we had a gentleman that was our guest speaker by the name Alan Eames. Alan Eames passed along the same year that John Sparrow did in 2007. And Alan would have been our annual speaker. He would just love the idea, you know. He just couldn't believe that somebody would put on a week-long beer festival. And so, the first place we were at, there was this family from Texas and they were on their way to Michigan for a family reunion. And so, they've been here every year for the opening, all right? And there's also this group from California, there's this group from Wisconsin, there's this group that's just coming from Denver that are from Pittsburgh that stop off before family reunions. And I think that's what's happened to this event is, as it's spread, as the word spread, that people were like, well, hey, we could, you know, jump off at 75, hit 32, go into Athens for a couple of days and then, you know, go back up north or go east or whatever. The one family from Pittsburgh actually spent their family reunion here, one year, and they just stayed for the week. It's pretty crazy.
It is, it's tremendous, yes. It is. Thank you.
Yeah, so we get our lot, we get a lot from the Midwest. We get, like I said, California and Seattle. And it's just never, you know, Wisconsin, the second year, we had a large group of U.S. Marshals come through from Wisconsin and they had a good time, you know.
That begs a question, I guess. We always get the estimates of our Halloween party in terms of how many people show up. Do you have, can you give us any sense as to the numbers of people who come? I know it's a long event and a lot of people, you know, will sit there and try beers all week long, bless their hearts. But any sense as to how, what the draw is?
It's 10 to 12,000. And I think that's about, I mean, you know, to be honest with you, I always said in the beginning, boy, if we filled the hotels up for the whole week, man, we would really be a shining star for the community then. And, you know, that's the goal and that's what we're working towards. So that, you know, we have people in town spending money. And that was my key buzzword the first few years was, you know, we want everybody to come in and spend those $100,000, then once they leave, we're going to recycle amongst ourselves, so.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming and for all the hard work that you do for this wonderful event.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is bike path easement with the Hawking Conservancy District. I don't have an actual map of these, but this is similar to what we discussed a couple weeks ago. And that we need permission from, in this case, the Hawking Conservancy District to maintain and keep the bike, the bike path or the general use path as we're referring to it as well, to keep that maintained. This is two tracts of land comprising about eight and a half acres. And the easement goes through, I believe, and depending on where it is, it, width can vary. But I would assume, and in one case, it was referenced about 20 feet wide, so, there was a question last time. Mayor, do you have a?
I haven't seen paperwork actually, but this is renewal of our bike path again. We have to re-up this every few years and we did the, we did the other section, yeah.
But I can, I can make sure that gets forwarded to you.
Good idea. Again, we did the mental health, the hospital last time, we discussed that, and this is the other section of it. We're working our way down, up and down the river.
How many, what, what term are these easements? Three years, 10 years?
The last one was a 15-year easement. And this is also going to cost us a dollar.
Dollar, yeah.
So, keep that, keep that in mind.
It gets a lot of use for a dollar.
I did not catch the term on this one. This one's permanent. Okay. That's even better. We might not have to see this contract again unless. This one's permanent, okay, that's even better, we might not have to see this contract again. Yeah, great, so, so that's good. And we have another easement to discuss on the agenda tonight, and this one is not quite as simple. This is in regards to the Columbus Circle Drive Access Road, or Circle Access Road. There are several easements, these are permanent easements as well, so these are from property owners in the area, or that have property along the new road there, including, there are at least, there are two property owners listed here. And they have, they've granted the easements, but we need council to formally accept these easements. And these are for, so we can have our city utilities run through their property, and also roadway easement, so we can finish installing and maintaining the roadway there. Do you have a question?
I do, so are we talking about on the front end of the property, or are we talking about, which part of the circle are you talking about?
So, this is, it's all in the back, in regards to, so the property, some of the property is, goes from Columbus Road, Dental Depot is on one of these properties, pieces of property.
Correct.
And it's a corner along the backside, where the actual Circle Drive, Columbus Circle Access Road will be. And then, part of it from Athens Health Realty is where there's a sewage pump station there. And so, I believe that includes that piece of property, and then, along where the roadway is being built, or rebuilt.
So, just for my knowledge, we know we built the new one that comes down behind the properties, the one that comes off, I want to say by the Community Connections Building or whatever.
Yes.
Is that part of the Columbus Circle as well, does the city maintain that as well?
So, you're talking about existing roadway, that will, we are, that's the phase, the second phase of this project, that will rebuild that section of road. It was never, never built up to city specifications in the first place, because it was a private road, and so, we're going in now and making the entire loop what it needs to be for the city to accept it and take responsibility for it. No, any other questions or comments on the easements? No, okay. And I believe that's it, unless there's any miscellaneous for transportation?
Looking for something?
No.
No?
No. Sorry. I think the only one thing I want to mention is, we're still working out, going through our RFPs for the bus system, and we're in the midst of, we've got two bids on that to take over, to actually run the buses. This is something that has to come up, and it was due. We took an extension till, I think, the end of March, so we're trying to get that squared away. And again, we're working with HAPCAP to do that, so I'm just keeping informed of the progression of things. And that's all I really have on that.
And the transportation coordinator that's in charge of that, Michael?
Mike Lockman.
Michael Lockman.
Yes.
And is he relatively new in that position?
He's been doing it for about 18 days.
Okay, so very new.
Very new. Essentially, he's going to be administering the grant. What we've done is, previous was coming out of my office to run it, and again, so really what you're seeing is, we're applying for the grant money, we get the grant money, it's pretty much a pass-through, some of it goes, of course, goes to McDonald's at this point to run the bus system, they charge us by the operating hour. While the HAPCAP is doing such a good job with Go Bus, we started thinking, "Well, maybe we should see if they can perk up our city system and get better performance out of it, so, or at least have more eyes on it." So, we're going to contract with them to administer the grant. So, we've got, now, we've outsourced both the administration of the grant, as well as the operation of the buses. I met with him today, we were talking to a person trying to sell us apps for generating bus systems and bus games, I guess it was. It was intriguing, but it was out of my league since I haven't done so.
Great, well, thank you very much, and that's all I have for transportation.
Thank you. We're going to move into a fairly short committee meeting of the whole, the whole group. Again, this is not something that we do regularly. Our new council member here, Jeff Reisner, has brought us a resolution that was first introduced as a matter through the Planning Development Committee. Many of us thought that that wasn't necessarily appropriate, so we're introducing it again to be discussed by the Committee of the Whole. We have heard, audience members, I know all of us on council have received emails regarding this resolution, a lot of support for it, a lot of discussion about the need for it. So, Mr. Reisner, go ahead.
Now, thank you, Mr. President, and let me say, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to go over this again, and I appreciate all the supporters coming out this evening to support of this resolution. And I just want to acknowledge your presence out there beyond the TV camera. Couple of weeks ago, I spoke a little bit about why I thought this resolution was necessary and appropriate for the City of Athens to consider it. And just to briefly recap that, it's my, excuse me, my opinion and belief that with the recent Supreme Court decisions, particularly the 2010 Citizens United versus the Federal Elections Commission case, the floodgates have been opened up for virtually unlimited amounts of corporate money to be donated into various PACs and super PACs that are now being used to essentially buy an election. And I think what's happening in South Carolina this past week was a very good example of how you can destroy reputations and candidates just by overwhelming the media with so much money. And my biggest fear is that will trickle down very soon to the local level, and soon our elections here, which are free and democratic, and pretty much free of big-money influences, will soon be tainted, and it will be soon very possible for any group or organization to finance a slate of candidates to make sure that a city does what they would like. And we're coming into things that are very, very much concerned to local government bodies like Athens, especially the controversy about fracking, and whether or not a company could come into the city limits and drill, or drill under the city, and then we find out, does the city, or does it not have the wherewithal to prevent that, or in some way slow it down or regulate? These are, these are big concerns, and I think we should all be aware of that. So, I believe the only way to correct this, because today, the law of the land says it's totally legal to do this financing, the only way to change it would be through a constitutional amendment. And the way to start for a constitutional amendment is from the grassroots, starting here. And I can't think of a more appropriate place in the United States to have such a resolution that defines democracy again than a city that's named after Athens, where democracy began 2,300 years ago. So, I think it's very appropriate that it begin here. So, if I have your permission, I'd like to read the resolution, and we can move on. So, here it is, I've sent out copies to people, but it's titled, "A Resolution in Support of Abolishing Corporate Constitutional Rights in Creating a Truly Representative Democracy. Whereas government of, by, and for the people has long been a cherished American value and fundamental and illegal rights of the people to self-govern, and thereby secure rights to life, liberty, property, and the pursuit of happiness is guaranteed in the Declaration of Independence and the U.S. Constitution. And whereas free and fair elections are essential to democracy and effective self-government, and whereas corporations are not and have never been human beings, are legal entities created by express permission of the people through our representative government, and being chartered to our servants rather than our masters, are therefore property subservient to human beings and that government which created them. And whereas corporations, unless restricted by their legal charter, can exist in perpetuity, can exist simultaneously in many nations at once, and need only profit for survival. And whereas corporate pursuit of profits and survival can be in direct conflict with the essential needs, welfare, and rights of human beings. And whereas the great wealth of large corporations allows them to yield coercive force of law to overpower human beings and communities, thus denying the people full exercise of their constitutional rights. And whereas application to corporations of the term persons, together with the adhering constitutional rights intended for natural persons, has long disadvantaged human persons who find themselves on an unequal playing field in matters pertaining to legislation, regulation, and the administration of justice. And whereas the judicial bestowal of civil and political rights on corporations allow them to trump the will of the people through the courts by invoking the constitutional rights conferred to them when they challenge state and local laws, regulations, and ordinances that supposedly violate their rights, even when those laws, regulations, and ordinances serve to protect the welfare and defend the rights of the human persons and the communities. And whereas the United States Supreme Court's 2010 Citizens United versus the Federal Elections Commission decision rolled back the limits which are elected representatives in Congress placed on corporate campaign spending to safeguard the integrity of our electoral process, therefore allowing unlimited spending from corporations, general treasuries to influence elections, candidate selection, and the political decisions. And whereas the spending power of corporate forces elected officials to divert their attention from the people's business, and even to vote against the interests of their human constituents in order to safeguard the flow of corporate campaign funds to keep them competitive when seeking reelection. And whereas vast amounts of money are available to corporations to establish and fund political action committees, PACs, and super PACs, which then sponsor advertising and public relations campaigns to overwhelm local opposition and to heavily influence the state legislatures to limit local government control of these issues and actions that would normally be under the jurisdiction of the local governments. And whereas the ability of corporations to operate transact business entered into contracts and seek legal regress can be facilitated and regulated by statute. And whereas it is the duty and obligation of any body of government composed of freely, democratically elected officials to ensure that all governmental elections are open and free from corruption and influence from non-person legal entities now and for posterity, be it resolved by the council of the City of Athens. The City of Athens joins cities, citizens, grassroots organizations, and local governments across the country in the call for an amendment to the Constitution of the United States to abolish corporate person hurt and return our democracy, our elections, and our communities to American persons. And that a copy of this resolution be communicated to the United States Congress to act in pursuit of Article 5 of the United States Constitution, to propose to the legislatures of the 50 states for the approval of such a constitutional amendment as forementioned, and also that copies of this resolution be communicated individually to the Ohio Senators Brown and Portman, and to the State of Ohio Congressional delegation. Thank you.
As a piece of legislation that would be decided by the Committee of the Whole, this will be on our agenda next Monday night for, this is a one-vote resolution, a single-vote resolution. Most of the ordinances that you see us deal with here are three reading resolution, three reading ordinances. This is a single reading resolution with a yea or nay vote on it, which will occur next Monday. Is that member of Reisner? I'm sorry?
February 6th.
Oh, right. We'll talk about that later. We do skip next week, it's the fifth Monday, but we'll remind you then, okay. Yes, number call.
I'd like to see the be it resolved strengthened and kind of cleaned up with mentioning which congressional, the names specifically of the congressional delegation. And specifically, there is an amendment process right now standing in Congress, I think Senator Saunders. And so, we, I would much more like, much stronger language, because right now, it's kind of wishy-washy, and I'd like to have, usually, our resolutions are specifically asking entities, or delegations, or the governor, or the government, to do specific things. Don't cut the budget, you know, pass this, and so, I think that we need to follow in our past resolution, kind of the same way that we do things in our past resolutions, so I'd like to just see it strengthened and more specific.
More specificity in the?
I'd welcome any suggestions or changes.
Okay. We will make sure that goes the path along. Other members, comments, questions?
Just that I would probably add to Chris Falls' comment, I think the most salient be it resolved section for me is Section 1, and that's what we're doing, is calling for an amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And so, that's the one that's particularly important for me in my consideration of this.
Yes.
And so, you're suggesting, Chris, that that be also part of the resolution, repeated type of thing, when you talk about the first step there?
Exactly.
That's what you're suggesting?
I'd be comfortable with that one. But, you know, I'm not, I wouldn't not vote for it without the others, but I'd be comfortable with that, and maybe with the additional information that Council Member Falls is adding.
So, you're talking about the City of Athens Joint Cities, citizens, grassroots organizations, constitutional amendment, that part of the resolution, or someplace else?
No, that particular part.
That part, okay.
That be it resolved, that first section.
Okay, we'll, we may well do some editing here, but we will have this before us at our next meeting, which is February 6th. We're going to move on now to City and Safety Services Committee. Okay, beginning with Hickory Street Waterline Improvement.
Thank you, Mr. President. In discussions with Public Works Director Stone, Member Neitz and I were informed of some concerns with Hickory Street, specifically the water lines. So, we need to appropriate roughly 37,500 to a project, it's already an approved PUD project on Hickory Street, which will, the money will then install new water lines in the area, which is in cooperation with a developer. So, currently, the lines in that vicinity are too narrow in diameter. So, we were informed by Public Works Director Stone that some of the changes would include upgrades in those lines. So, for instance, heading uphill Canterbury, there's a four-inch line, and that will be replaced with a six-inch line. Additionally, a six-inch line will replace a two-inch line on Hickory. And those will tie into a much larger line, which will be updated as well on Richland Avenue. I think that's, I believe, a 14-inch line is what we were informed. And again, these are, these are approved, this is approved PUD project, and that the cost will be shared evenly with the developer of that project. Questions, comments?
Total amount, 32,500, or is that?
Thirty-seven, 37,500, that's my understanding. Unless there's an update.
Thirty-seven, that's total, so we're looking at appropriating half of that?
No.
Sorry, go ahead and clarify.
We'd like to round up, and so, I'm thinking 40,000 out of the 740, and that is the total amount, and then the developer indeed will rebuild for that portion. Again, I think we spoke about it before, it's an opportunity here to upgrade for the greater good of the city at the same time.
Thank you.
For Hickory, would that also influence Mulligan, as Hickory kind of rounds the corner and becomes Mulligan?
It's the other section of Hickory that goes the other side behind C and E.
And Canterbury.
Yeah, crosses Canterbury, goes to, yeah. And if you go back there, he's already got the pins up, I think, and he's starting to work on the PUD there. I believe he was talking about, are we talking about putting a hydrant in there too, I think?
If necessary. My drawings show that Mulligan is an eight-inch line, or maybe he's upgrading that to eight. I showed an eight coming this way, six and six.
I don't know that he's upgrading beyond the bend on the road, right?
Yeah, I think. I didn't think so either. No. Just Hickory.
So it is the north and south side of Hickory, if you have the dividing line, become Canterbury?
Yes.
I think, I think a half, I think on one side of Canterbury was going to be an eight-inch line and then a six-inch on the other side, I believe.
Yes.
And this again is related to safety because the current water lines are insufficient for both current domestic and fire demand, and then as well for future demand. So these are safety concerns. Question?
So I'm just, you made the statement, shared the cost.
Correct.
So who's paying 40,000 and who's paying, I mean, when you say share the cost, what does that mean?
The developer's going to be billed for their portion for upgrading the two-inch line just on Hickory.
On Hickory.
There. And we're taking this opportunity to increase our flow capacity in the general area. I want to say it's 18, 20 to 22 or something.
And I understand when you do projects, it's better, it's just like the sidewalks or anything else, it's better if you have an opportunity to have all the equipment there and to do it at one time.
Thank you. Next up, unless there's any other questions or comments? Next up, we have discussion regarding the EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund. This is addressing, again, upgrades in our water lines. I believe this is specifically project number 264. So there have been three areas by the Public Works Director that have been identified within the community that need upgraded water lines. So we're looking at Harris, Ranson, and McGuffey. And then the second one is West Union, Depot, and Schaefer. And the third area that was identified in the community on the Anna neighborhood is Joneswood, Riverview, and Terrace. And we're looking at an ordinance that will allow the City Service Safety Director to apply for a loan to this EPA Water Supply Revolving Loan Fund up to $990,000 for construction of replacement water lines. Now this, and the City Service Safety Director is here this evening, and we have acknowledged that we do need to discuss or have further discussions with the auditor, correct?
To look at our debt capacity and the water fund as a whole. But we have been, as Councilman Butler stated, notified that we're eligible for up to that amount. We need to proceed on whether or not we're funding a portion in-house or how we're going to break this out. But in order to meet these timelines, we've got to make those decisions, and we do still need to meet with the auditor regarding our existing debts. But we anticipate doing that so that we have something to come forward on Monday.
So the amount may change?
I mean, if we look at it and we have the capacity as opposed to trying to put something off, and if EPA is willing to loan it to us, then we can get all three areas done. That may be what we request.
Member Gosney?
And I know a couple of these streets, I don't know often, but I assume they've been hotspots of water breaks and issues for many years.
Yes, we had one, at least two last year on West Union. Remember, there's one in front of the HDL Center.
Near the.
The year before, I think I walked over some bumpy, one of the parades, I walked over some bumpy asphalt two years before on Union, West Union. Harris and Ranson have been drawing out quite regularly during, usually during the winter times, it seems. Joneswood's, I'm not sure how bad that is. I haven't seen, I know it's got problems, but I don't know how many breaks have been there.
And I think they'd also work on the storm runoff in that area in particular.
Member Butler?
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask, often such loans are giving us very low interest rates or inexpensive payback. Do we, are we looking at this in those ways again?
We will indeed. I don't have a percentage in front of me, but, and if council feels it necessary, we'll come back to the next committee meeting for additional discussion.
There are also other sources of loans too, but this is the one that's the best for the water, water fund. And again, we've always been adding money to the water fund, debt funds, to pay that material off. We both have a system for moving money out of the operating into debt for sewer and, so this is just another jump to get this stuff repaired.
Thank you. Yeah, member President?
Any idea how many miles of pipe we're talking about?
Not offhand.
I don't think the survey's quite completed yet. We have, I have not seen it. The surveying work has been being conducted since last, late last fall, early winter.
And where's it at up to this point?
I know that they've done, I don't know. I can get those figures once it's completed.
Curious to, because I saw a recent blowout about a month ago on West Union near the Union Street Cafe.
Yes, it's pretty far down there.
Yeah, I was, have to commend the City Water Department getting out there and standing in sub-zero, or below 32-degree weather, up to their waist in water.
The water's warmer than the air.
Yeah, that's why we're down there. I found that out. I still have to come in because they have to get out of it sometime.
It would be of interest to know the, you know, the linear feet for, you know, a million dollars gets us how much new water line. I know it's expensive.
And a lot of it compares the depth of how far they have to dig down, we could put it out there. And then, you know, the size of the pipe. I mean, this is the thing, when something goes, you know what happens if you have a blowout? A lot of times they start trying to tap it off and they realize the valves that close it off haven't been turned in years. And just the act of turning the valves create problems too, because it's a rusty valve.
So, Member Gosney and myself are very well aware of that in our streets that we travel every day where you try to do this and finally you just had to repair. I don't know, how many miles or how many feet of line was that? It was very long and very complicated. Fairview, Woodward, yeah, it was very complicated. I don't think you had asked for any loans on that, you just had to fix it because it was blowing out all the time.
And again, the blessing of living in a community that has history is that we have history, but then the curse is that we have an aging infrastructure and that we will constantly have to continue to update.
But, but our administration and.
Have a timeline.
Have been very good about looking for these possibilities that make things much more affordable for us. So, that's good.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Last, under miscellaneous, is some new news, exciting news about a FEMA Fire Act grant that the city was the recipient of. And again, this is the hard work of Chief Troxell and his efforts. Earlier, well, I guess it was last week, Member Nysel and Member Patterson and I were present when the chief showed this information with us. It's for a grand total of $149,640. So it's a reimbursement grant with a 90-10 split. So the city in the long run will be responsible for $14,964. So we will have to pay initially upfront the whole cost and then we'll be reimbursed with our responsibility being the $14,964. There's some details on this, which again, this is good news and exciting because we're updating a very old infrastructure. This is 30-year-old technology that the communication system, the radio spectrum is comprised of. And so this is a new system which will allow the fire department to communicate with other departments in Athens County, because the old system has no ability to cross-communicate with other state or regional resources. So this allows us to be better in communications with, especially in emergencies and problematic situations for first responders, police, fire. Well, this is specific to fire, but again, it's essential for effective communication, the safety of firefighters, other first responders, and the public at large. One last comment I'll make, because I know Member Patterson has some thoughts on this as well. The chief has informed us that the State of Ohio has built a state-of-the-art system which is available to all first response agencies in the state. We only need to purchase this new equipment, which will allow us to tie into that system. So instead of us reinventing wheel, we're able to tie into a current system that is up-to-date in the newest technology. Member Patterson?
Yeah, this is, when I found out about this, I was ecstatic. Having long discussions with Chief Pyle in the Athens Police Department about their radio problems and so on and so forth, but understanding that the fire department is also using an old antiquated system, and I say that politely, they, the MARKS system, which is the system that is under this grant now, is going to not only allow for a lot of crystal-clear communications, but not only between the fire department, but the sheriff's department also has the MARKS system. And, sorry?
Highway Patrol as well.
I believe, I also have it. So it's far-reaching, it's crystal-clear. The other thing that's, that is important and worth noting is that the old system had dead spots in the City of Athens. TS Trim was an area where communications were poor under the old system, so MARKS will clear up that problem as well. So this is exciting. I think that you're going to see a lot more work in the future in trying to secure the same system for the police department as well. That way we'll have a fully integrated system, which will save on a lot of levels, like especially expertise on the system. We'll have, we have users already, so we can tap into them in the future when it comes to bring ourselves up to speed on an otherwise outstanding system.
The details include 22 portable radios, eight mobile radios with associated software and cables, six control point radios, 22 portable radio chargers, eight vehicular repeaters with associated installation accessories, and eight mobile chargers and signal amplifiers and accessories. So that's what is adding up to that grand total. When we think about, again, natural disasters, floods, tornadoes, and then other man-made potential problems like train derailments or hazardous materials being released, communication is essential for the safety and welfare of the community. Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts or input regarding this?
Planning and Development Committee, Number Fall?
Great, thank you. Onto the exciting extravaganza of revocable licenses. We do many, many of these during the year. This is our first batch. We tend to do them in batches. First of all, a revocable license, for people who are new to council, is basically a license to use the city right-of-way for miscellaneous, non-permanent sort of items such as fences, ramps, signs. And it's a way of the city being able to know what's out there, what people are putting on their property, and a way of managing and making sure that they're also maintained. So basically, either in an application, and the ones that we're talking about tonight are renewals, all of them have to go through an application process. They have to show that they have insurance to cover the item, mostly signs. They go through a process where they get written input from city administration. This is important, especially if the sign hasn't been kept up, or maybe people have complained about it not being in a good place, it's creating hazards, especially sight-of-line hazards. They also get input from adjacent property owners. They provide drawings in plan and elevation that are always on public review in the code administration office, and they give a fee to, for the application. And the property owner's always responsible for the maintenance of the said, whatever they're applying for. And so tonight we have, the Dairy Barn is applying for a renewal for their sign that's on Richland Avenue that we all know and love. The other one is Athens, the Visitors and the Visitor Building out in front of the Rec Center. It's another one. Community, yeah, sorry. Sorry. But we use it for recreation, fencing, the fencing center. And then GK Development, which is out on Deer Drive, their property location is 224 Columbus Road, and that's another sign. And then last but not least is a placement in front of Bromley Hall at the handicap ramp and utility corridor. So these have all been, the applications are all full and complete and they have paid their fees. So we're going to put an ordinance to OK those renewal requests. Any questions? We get these through the whole year, and we'll try to do them by blocks, because it's much easier.
Maybe you mentioned this, I think they're usually 10-year.
Yes, they're usually 10-years. Every once in a while, they may be 15. Some of the easements that we do with the state is 15. That's normally what we do, but private individuals, usually 10.
We have one that will be coming to you that is new for wireless communication, not a tower, but that will be asking to use the right-of-way around, just out within the city limits, 56, crossing there. I don't know if I have it prepared in time for Monday, so.
Okay. Put that in with the group.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments? The second item I have on my agenda is authorizing, I will bring forward authorization for the Merit of Two. This is a renewal of, a agreement with the State of Ohio Department of Development to administer a loan fund, and this is for our Community Development Block Grant, CDBG. And the Community of Development administers our block grants when we do get those, and so we would like to go in and renew the agreement with them. Once again, and that's for another, how many years? Three years?
Three years, I believe.
Three years?
And this is with the state?
With the State of Ohio.
This is for the economic side of our CDBG money.
Right.
We have a housing one that's administered by Hapcat.
So, so this is the other side.
This one is not really a lot, very busy, but we would like to get it busier, more work on it.
But it's always good to have the agreement in place, so we don't have to do emergency passing to get it in place. Any other questions, comments? That's all I have for tonight.
Any more questions?
Well, I do have one question with, of the Planning Commission. And I know that you talked about the, trying to.
No residential.
Fly off by and make it more.
You want some information on that?
I would like to, no, I don't want information, I want to see it in front of us as a recommendation from the Planning Committee Commission as soon as possible.
Okay, yes, we had three different versions bandied about last week.
Right.
We'll probably meet in about another two weeks or so.
Can we bandy quicker?
Can we clarify what you're talking about so the audience may not understand?
The little problem we had with the definition of what a business, what determines a business in the first story of a B2D.
Or B3, yes. Well, B2, B3, you can't have residential, any residence on the first floor. It doesn't say what you should have, it just says you can't have that. And then there is, as the Stimson case, Bellavino points out, there's obviously a different interpretation of how that should be done and what should go on the first floor. So we're looking at, I think, City of Findlay has one that says basically commercial businesses pretty much wide open, but it excludes specifically parking. I think Chairperson Bittner brought up one with a laundry list of all businesses allowed in there. That is a little bit clunky because you're listing 20 businesses in each case for B2 and just as many for B3. And of course, you know as well as I, new businesses will sprout up and there'll be a new definition that's in there. Let's see, I think Columbus, I forget what Columbus does. I think they say specifically "commercial businesses" and they mean businesses as well. So we're looking at different permutations of that. We'll get there. And of course, I think we're still working with, we have Willhead and we have Telecommunications is on your plate right now?
The telecommunications will be probably put forward in the next week or two. Paul Logue is working on the last little questions the council had. I'm not really sure if we need to bring it back in committee because the questions were pretty minor, and so when he gets that done, I may just introduce it as an ordinance.
Okay.
We are still waiting, um, and I'll, uh, connect, reconnect with the law director on the wellhead protection ordinance revisions because we're about ready to bring those forward.
Right. Okay.
Member Nysley, um, finance and personnel.
Good timing.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have four agenda items for tonight, and the first one is about tax incremental financing, which some people refer to as a TIF. And this is a, is a bit of background, this is, as I understand, a tax incentive program, and it was utilized by several properties on East State Street here in Athens. And the funds brought in from this, the revenues have been utilized as the city of Athens makes improvements to East State Street. So it's a method of raising revenues for which a business applies for an exemption to taxes, and then they make service payments in lieu of the taxes, and the revenues come to the city into the TIF account two times per year. And the approximate amount of revenue for the city of Athens is four hundred thousand dollars. Forty-five percent of this goes to the schools. Then the remaining fifty-five percent of the money is specified for the city and it is to be transferred into different funds. So what we're proposing is that, um, and, and historically, what we've used this for, what the city of Athens has used this for in the past, is, um, paying down our loan on East State Street widening, and we currently owe approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. We've also used it for street repairs specifically on East State Street, and then also, uh, some landscaping at the community center. So at the next council meeting, what we'll be proposing is an ordinance, uh, for transferring this money that's coming in from the tax incremental financing, is approximately four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So two hundred and twenty thousand of this amount will go to account five ninety-three, and when we read the ordinance, we also refer to a specific transaction code, and this transaction code will be three hundred. And so this is the money that is to be, um, transferred to the school system. Then the remaining two hundred and fifty thousand, we will be asking to be appropriated to account four eighty-three, which is our East State Street debt fund. So what we're doing is giving the portion that's due to the schools to the schools, the portion that is coming into the city, we're do-, we're now down, uh, paying down our note, um, for what we've borrowed on East State. And we'll have, so that's the first appropriation that we'll be bringing forward next week. Yes?
Um, I was unable to participate in the conversation last week, so there'll be nothing allocated towards street improvement, or is that something we'd come back to you and say? For example, we can, we consistently get requests for additional pet head crossings out there on East State Street that allow a better countdown and so that was, is that something that'd come back and ask?
Right. I only ask for the money to pay, forward our share to the city schools.
Okay.
So, um, any additional, if we look at the TIF fund now, um, yeah, there's probably about fifty thousand dollars unappropriated, might be.
Available for the East.
Right. Often, I think that comes along maybe with the annual street repairs later in the spring, maybe.
Yeah, it's not an immediate.
To you, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Quick question, appropriation in, uh, four eighty-three right now is eight hundred thousand, is that it?
Four eighty-three is the debt fund.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna transfer money from the TIF to the debt fund?
Right.
Okay.
So the money's already appropriated, but it's not in the fund.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have to appropriate it in the TIF fund for transfer, but it is already appropriated in the debt fund.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The second item then, uh, moving on, will be an appropriation for the revolving loan fund, and this is account two forty-nine, and we'll be appropriating fifteen hundred dollars for the admin fee that the city is due to pay out to the organization for administering this loan for us. And then I have, under item three, I have four, what are account housekeeping items of sorts, where we're cleaning up small amounts that are in accounts, and often auditors will tell you, you know, clean them up so that they're not sitting there with a few hundred dollars or a thousand dollars in them. So there'll be four of them. The first one will be closing the account for the EPA litigation fund, and some of you may remember a few months ago as, as we paid off, uh, the last of this. Glad to have that finished. And so that can, uh, fund currently contains four thousand, seven hundred ninety-six dollars and fifty-four cents, and we're proposing that we would transfer the money to the water fund, which is account seven forty. Second item would be to close out account seven thirty-three, and what this does is close out the parking garage debt fund, and that would transfer that money over to the parking garage account, which is seven thirty. So once again, this was a loan that we took out some years ago and where we had incurred debt for improvements we made to the parking garage. They, they've since been made and the debt's been, uh, paid off. In the court security fund, there's a hundred and sixteen dollars. This is account two thirty-four, and we'll be transferring this to the municipal court general fund, their computer fund, which is account one oh one point one oh six. And then, lastly, there is a hundred and seventy-seven dollars remaining in account two thirty-six, and this is the Athens County Municipal Drug Court Grant, and we'll be transferring that over to account two thirty-seven, which is the DUI court fund. And the last item that I have is an ordinance that we will, that has been read, but we will need to be amending by, uh, three thousand dollars. And if I am understanding right, with this money has already been appropriated, but we need to authorize the expenditure for this.
I, I do have a couple miscellaneous.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I just learned about some of them at staff today, although I was under the impression the law enforcement trust fund was discussed. Was it discussed when you and Steve?
Yeah, it was discussed at the committee meeting.
The twenty, for about twenty thousand dollars, uh...
And this is, I'm sorry, is this cleaning up a fund again?
No. This was a request for money to be-
Appropriated into the, into that fund line.
Okay.
And that's, uh, as you said, two ninety-three fund line, that is the, uh, law enforcement trust fund. Uh, if you notice, uh, well, okay, certified resources right now, about fifty-one thousand and six hundred ninety-two. Um, I did not put anything in there because I wasn't sure if we needed anything at the time. Uh, Chief Pyle brought up that this is used for, um, some capital occasionally and some, uh- What was he talking about?
Well, the mounted saddles are like eleven to thirteen years old, those kind of things. I mean, it's really supply items that need to be, um, he needs money allocating that, so.
So we want to just put some money in there for, for his use. I think he was talking about, what, twenty-five, twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, okay.
Twenty thousand, okay.
We have, looking at the budgets and they, they noticed little gaps here, so the idea is, is that we fill them in as well.
Mm-hmm. In addition, it came to my attention that the coin counter that is utilized for all the meters is disabled. It's nineteen years old. It was given to us by a bank. We actually can get a trade-in value of around fourteen hundred dollars, but it's not cheap. It's a little over nine thousand. It's like an eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollar, um, piece of equipment, and we feel that we should buy the maintenance that's just under a thousand dollars a year. And that would be split between cap and the parking garage fund. The parking garage fund is fairly healthy, should be able to-
And the amount then?
Uh, a total of, not to exceed ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
Probably like five and five.
Depending on the trade-in, the old one.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Why does the city need a coin counter when you can go to Kroger's and have your-
That's a lot of coins to take to Kroger's.
Oh, my land. I can't imagine we've monopolized that machine for hours.
I don't-
Plus, don't they charge you?
I don't know. I'm just being a little facetious about it. I know banks will count your coins for nothing. They don't.
Well, actually, they, my understanding of history is such that Chase at one point said, "No," and that's how we got the coin counter. Here you go. We also have to get a coin counter that, um, complies with, uh, OSHA standards essentially because we've had claims in the past about the weight of the bags and the money, and so this, this should get us to that point, so.
I mean, we are talking about a substantial amount of revenue.
I, I'm aware of that.
So it's a huge amount, it's not-
But how is the program going with the, the little, uh, electronic coin, uh-
The card, you mean?
The cards, yeah.
I asked the same question to staff, I did not get an answer at the time.
Okay.
Find out.
Find out.
I said, "What about those smart cards?"
Yeah, I, I have one. I haven't used it lately, but it's always worked for me.
Okay.
That's all.
And I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, on the last, on the coin counter, ten thousand dollars, and you're splitting it between capital and-
Um, what would be seven thirty parking garage, and I just, you know, I pulled it out of the hat caps.
Capital and profit, okay.
Yeah, five eighty.
Or, or whatever else.
Seven thirty.
Okay.
And lastly, um, and this is a little more significant, and we need time to meet again with the auditor on it, it appears that we might be underfunded in both our, uh, basically our arts parks and recreation departments, a little bit here, a little bit there, um, so we'll be meeting with the auditor and probably have something that will come forward to you. For example, Arts West only got a thousand dollars in supplies, so they normally use just under three or something like that.
About three and four, yeah.
Be nice to try to support it. So we've just gotta meet internally and come to that.
Okay. So we'll get an update on that, on what's needed then, okay.
Okay.
And if there aren't any other items?
I don't have anything.
Then these would be the last of my items for finance.
Okay, then, um, we are just about to end. I, I do need to remind everybody that next Monday is the fifth Monday in January. Um, traditionally, council does not meet on the fifth Monday. When the fifth Monday comes up closer to the end of the year, we might do that, but right now, we're planning to take the next Monday off. So our next council meeting, regular council meeting, will be, um, a regular council meeting where we vote on ordinances, will be on Monday, February sixth.
Okay, and just last minute plug for the town hall meeting that's coming up in February, just so everybody knows.
Okay.
And the date is seven?
Next day, Tuesday, February seventh.
Seven.
Six-thirty, community center, open mic, everybody come.
Okay, this is, this is nonspecific, this is where you're taking questions to be answered at a-
And there is, the Disabilities Commission is discussing having one, I think in March, for mental illness and housing. Uh, we're putting it together, March or April. Also, in the past, uh, usually there's been a liaison with council, attending or at least involved in the Disabilities Commission. I know you were on it previously, Jim, so, uh, I don't know who wants to step forward on that.
Actually, I'm just getting ready to mention that.
Okay.
The, uh, the Disabilities Commission is looking for a council member to be a representative, as the mayor said, a liaison person between the commission and the council, so please let us know. Also, speaking of council members, um, we did mention last, last week about, especially new member orientation. If you're interested, please talk to Debbie Walker so that we can get those reservations made. Okay? I have nothing else. I think we are adjourned.